Okay.
Okay.
I'd like to call the meeting to order for the February, February sixth, two thousand twenty-three meeting. And roll call, please, Carolyn.
Welsh.
Here.
Morgan.
Here.
Stan Anderson.
Here.
Houston.
Here.
Well, yes.
Here.
Off.
Here.
Mike Anderson.
Here.
We do have one.
Okay, thank you. Stan is saying that. Glad to believe it. Mike, would you consider that?
I would believe this.
Hey, do we have an order of business for emergencies?
We do not.
Okay. And do we have attendance on Zoom?
Yes, Councilman Stan Anderson is.
Okay. I would like to ask for a motion to approve the agenda. So.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stan, I didn't, did you vote?
Yeah.
He's shaking his head, yes. Okay. All right. I just didn't hear that head shake. Okay, with that, I'd like to invite Sergeant Perkins to the podium for his police report. Understanding your boss is going to go to DC tomorrow, huh?
I didn't hear that, so you know more than I do.
Oh.
I came in late today, so.
Okay.
January report had a pretty slow month, which is good. A couple arrests. One of them was for reckless discharge of a firearm and the other one was for violation of protection. So those were two arrests in the month. Other than that, I don't think we have anything else. Our truck vehicles over at the shop in Kaysom, people didn't know that. Our truck UTV.
Didn't make the paper.
Thank you for doing that.
And is that going to require special training or anything or?
Jump in and go.
Okay.
Once we get some snow, some more snow, we'll get out and get the deputies used to it again, get into it and drive it. But it's pretty easy. Not a lot to it.
Well, that is wonderful that it'll be located here.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. Okay, any other questions? Jerry?
I hate to bring it up, but I hear we had an incident in the town that only weren't covered by law enforcement.
Remind me.
House being broke into, burglarized, residents hiding in the garage.
Oh.
Cloud the police.
Down at two in the morning. Yeah, there wasn't anybody here. They came from Rattler.
Is there any way we could somehow have someone on call up? Something?
We do, we do, they're available. The rabid sergeant just didn't call them out that night, so. And I don't work at two in the morning, so.
No.
I can't, I don't control that.
Yeah.
I do know what I do know what you're talking about.
Is there some way that they can let know that there is police officers?
The rabid, they know that. So I just don't know why they didn't choose to call that night. I can't answer that question.
We're, I'm sorry, we're just lucky they didn't get us out, hiding in the garage while they damaged the house.
I'll agree with you.
Okay, any other questions or concerns? Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, ma'am. Good for you.
Okay, do we need to clear any conflicts of interest tonight? Seeing none? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, including minutes of the city council, the fire department, the claims, and the on-call schedule and the sales tax report? Do I have a?
Wrong.
It's been moved and seconded? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Good. Okay, I didn't hear you that time, Stan. Good job.
I would just comment that there's two bill lists coming around because somehow I missed last month's to get signed, so it's going around tonight, so they're not all being spent tonight, some is from the last meeting, but just need to have the signatures, so.
Okay. All right. So now, where are we at? Did we, yes, we approved that. Okay, that brings us to item number ten, the street improvement. Tim, welcome.
Yes, thank you for having us. Our first agenda item on your agenda tonight is the street improvement payout number six to Simon contractors. This is the closeout final payout for that project. I know it's been a long time coming, the way it sounds, but a couple things to note with this. If you look all the way to the end of that payout, those last, I think it's about H R O save line items in the unit price spreadsheet, kind of layout those, call it deducts, as discussed there previously, for some work that was, let's say, kind of substandard work, and then also for the different limited damages, engineering fees, things like that, just with the project going on, we didn't anticipate it. So with that, the, the substandard work and then those limited damages, you know, you did end up with some curbing gutter with new nicks in it and things like that, but you did see almost a ninety thousand dollar total deduct off the, the cost of that project as well. So with that, recommending approval of this final payout and then we'll, of course, initiate kind of final closeout of that project as well. So any questions with that part of it?
Hey, Gary, did you have any questions or comments on this?
Nope.
Are we all good?
Yep, we're all good. I talked to David and Tim just today, so.
Okay. And that also includes all the landscaping issues and all of that? We're gonna get that taken care of or it's already done or?
Correct. So this will subtract the cost of that, that landscaping out. But then that part of it, once we get free stars to come do the work, then the city will pay them directly, so.
Okay.
You'll, you'll still have that cost, but it's being subtracted out of this one, so you're not paying for the points, good question.
Okay. So any further questions? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the payout number six to Simon contractors for fifty-two thousand seven hundred thirteen dollars and fifty-one cents?
So moved.
Okay, Jerry. It's been moved and seconded. Any further comments, questions, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Okay. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Okay. So then that brings us, Mr. Hartman, to number eleven, the Hanson subdivision.
Yep, so payout number three for the Hanson sub, we thought is working over there on the project again and has the, the bulk of this payout tonight is primarily the culverts. He has mostly RCP culverts in the ground. And then just a couple other, some traffic control catching up on that. And then has started putting in some electrical conduit and some of those items as well. He's waiting and coordinating with Golden West, their telecom line is in the way. But then we'll, we'll keep going with the sewer as well. And then there's a portion of about half the sewers in the ground and that's included in this payout as well, too, so. Question on that one.
It's fun to see him out there working again, that's for sure, that the the weather's kind of cooperating enough for him to get back at it. So they go hard, then they get held up and go hard again. So, okay, with that being made, do I have a motion to approve app number three to TDM for fifty-four thousand two hundred nineteen dollars fifty-five cents?
So moved.
Moved?
Second.
And a second? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so then the IP lift station plaque.
Yep, so an agenda item here down at the industrial park, specifically the, the plat that will plaid out a separate new lot for the lift station. This will break that small parcel out of the existing lot one, I believe it is, and kind of create that small point one-nine acres parcel up front for the city to be able to, to maintain and retain ownership of your, your new lift station down there. So with that, it's important to note that tonight's motion or tonight's action would approve the plat. We would, provided council's all okay with it, approve the plat, everything's good there. We'll get the Mylar printed, get that over to you and, and get it signed and help facilitate getting that filed as well. So Mylar would follow, just so the mayor's aware that, that would follow with the sign as well. We'll have it with me tonight, but want to make sure the council was all good and, and good to approve that.
And this is so that, for instance, Garrett can have access to that if there needs to be repair or whatever you do. What do you do with the lift station anyway?
Just repair, just maintenance.
Okay.
Keep the pumps running.
Small things like that. So that's the purpose of this particular piece being parceled off and that way whoever buys that lot one will have access to all the rest and not be concerned with that.
Well, we'll make your lot one just a hair smaller than it is today, but again, keeping your assets and ownership for your location there.
Okay. So with that being said, do I have a motion to approve the lift station plaque? As presented. So Kelly's moved?
Second.
And Dan has seconded. Any further questions, concerns? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Do you want to touch on a couple small things with a few other projects, too?
Absolutely. Because that's what this document's about.
Yeah, it's pretty similar to last time we were over, too, but just a couple things to mention. Echo Valley subdivision have finishing up construction contract, that's outdated already. Carolyn did give me the construction contract for that, so we're all good there. We received some constructions submitted. One thing to note, we are still coordinating potential mixed design and calling it to utilize those airport millings potentially for the base travel surface over there. We honestly haven't seen a lot of that as a travel surface. Normally we see it like under art surfacing pavement, base course type setting, but we are still optimistic that there's an opportunity to use those and, and still get a good finished product from there. Otherwise, industrial park development, just stop me, I'm not going too fast by all means, but industrial park development, we just addressed that plat and then mandrel test. So to make sure there's no irregular bends in the pipe or anything like that, they, they pull, it's called a mandrel through it. That was one test that hadn't been completed yet. Contractor was over, did that Friday, everything checked out good there. They did also address the manhole number two. Actually, I think it's number one, there's a typo there, I apologize, but no, manhole number two was the infiltration issue, so that has been addressed and Garrett's kind of helped monitoring just pumps to, to make sure we've got that taken care of there as well. Hanson sub contractor is still just working over there. Like we talked about with the payout, sewers have in, culverts are, the large culverts are in, coordinating moving of that telecom line. And he's still working over there with some good weather. Otherwise, street improvements, we talked about that final payout tonight to close out of that. And then last thing, Fourth Avenue reconstruction, that, no substantial changes there, design is ongoing. We need to come over and do just a little bit more survey work within the intersection down here. So kind of waiting for the snow to melt, but it does look like our surveyor can probably get in and tromp through the mud a little bit, get what they need. Get them on the schedule there. One thing I, I'm just thinking of and sort of circle back up, but so valuable, we are working with the mayor and the developers there for some additional plating needs as part of that project, too.
I, I have a question on, on the industrial park, the manhole, what's an infiltration situation?
There is some groundwater leaking into that manhole around one of the, where the pipe comes into the manhole, there's a rubber boot and there was some groundwater leaking in, which isn't the end of the world, but if you have a bunch of infiltration, it just essentially is water that you don't need to be paying to pump, pump up the hill, so we just wanted to work with them and make sure they got that fixed. But they, they're able to crawl down into the manhole and, and add some extra sealants in there and tell pretty quickly if there's no more water coming into the wet wells, you know they can.
Very good, thank you.
Is that what was being pumped up with church?
Well, pumped.
Was pumping it out or in?
Well, they were testing.
They were test, pressure testing it when they were doing that. There's water everywhere.
Which then led them to be able to fix it, I think is what the deal was. Had to find it first, so.
No, a long time. A little bit of a painful process to find it. They found it, got it fixed.
Okay. Any other questions then for Tim? All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
For excellent update, thank you. Okay, so then that brings us to item number thirteen, ambulance update. Do we have that compared to that?
Yeah, the only update I have right now is, there's nothing has changed since last meeting. We got from you guys banned from the fifty thousand dollars you were going to give us, we got thirty-six projected through the mid-March, all right now. I am not aware now. Yeah, I'm not aware of any donations so far, who received anything, nothing hit our bank account. Um, I know the economic development started initiative and created a board funding page. We had a press release in the paper, just asking for donation right now. We need to make it through the May, because we're gonna receive our town district money in May. And then the police will give us a little break. To think of other issues we have with the ambulance and don't think about how we're gonna make it to the next payroll. Um, the one thing I would like to say today again, we have our annual meeting on March fourteenth. It's at seven PM and we're gonna have it here at the community center. I see there is lots of conversations started through the community members. I would encourage everyone to come to our annual meeting, we're gonna try to educate the public on the situation, maybe as much as we can, of course, to our knowledge. We don't have lots of history with this, but I think people have lots of questions and it's probably going to be stuck rumors or something, but we would like to clarify a lot of things during the annual meeting and if anybody feel like they want to have an answer, I just encourage you, please reach out to the board members, myself and Joe, Zach, Dan Hawk. And on another note, I should add, just like I said, we have four positions to fill. One position is gonna be finishing one-year term, which is Zach is running for this one, he's just gonna finish one-year term, that's for the previous director, whoever resigned, I'm not sure. I am actually running for the brand new for three-year term. We still need somebody to run and I think Linda indicated she wants to run for the forms to finish like two-year term left, because we had Carolyn resign last month, so somebody has to finish her term. And we have brand new terms again, three-year terms. And I just received a petition today for this one, so, but I still encourage if anybody wants to join the board, you can pick up petition from the city office or from the ambulance shed. The timeline to turn the petition in by February seventeenth, by the end of the day, I'll say like four-thirty PM. And I think that's it, that's all I wanted to update you on. The one thing I'm probably gonna invite Linda right now, because she started an initiative and I probably would like her to talk on that.
Lilia?
Yeah.
How many, how many board members on the annuals?
Two thousand five board members, right now we have four.
What was that, nineteen fourteen?
March fourteen, it's Tuesday at seven PM.
Hello, everybody. There are four of us that are circulating a petition for the city council to give us the funds to take us through May. We'll give you, the rest of you ready or can they put that please? We'll give each of you a copy of the petition. I have. Oh, I'm sorry. I have over two hundred and fifty people that sign, yeah, the petition, some of whom we had in, other people. We're all around the country. And we have more than you can imagine. This one is fans. And what we're asking for right now is short-term funding to take us through May. So that we can get the ones that we are going to be getting from the tax whispering. We have no more major funding until then. The money you have given us or the money you have given us in, out of the fifty thousand dollars, the thirty-six will take us to the middle of March. We had twenty-seven thousand dollars when this new bunch of people took over the board. Twenty-seven thousand dollars allowed us to pay February payroll, payroll, that's gone. What you have given us will take us to the middle of March. After that, if we don't have funding, wall doesn't have an ambulance. So the question, bottom line is, guys and girls, ambulance or no ambulance? And I'm not on the board yet. And Lily has been working the hardest at this the longest. And we have lots of things that we are working on getting for the ambulance that will improve our financial condition right away. One of them is telemedicine. It will be at no cost to wall or no cost to the ambulance. It will provide a doctor and a nurse in the back of the ambulance and probably with just a paramedic. And hopefully, we're working on drivers that won't be paid. They will get a stipend, but that we, this way we won't be paying paramedic or an EMT to drive the ambulance, because that kills you financially, too. There are lots of things like this that we're already working on, although we're not even a board yet, we're not elected. But we can't do this by the fifteenth of March. We need the time to find out exactly what went wrong, exactly how to fix it and get this thing running again smoothly. And we really do honestly think we can do it. And so do all of these people that are running for the ambulance board. We have two more people that have, are considering running for them, that's Melanie Shaw and Jordan Kirsten. You have people on there who are dedicated to having the ambulance stay in wall. And frankly, we're hoping the board is that dedicated, too. And if you have questions, I can answer what I can answer, but Lily can answer better than I can.
How much more you think you need to get to May?
Sixty-seven dollars roughly.
Sixty-seven, pardon?
Sixty, sixty thousand dollars.
I'm like, you said sixty-seven, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, one-six or six-zero? Thanks, my bad.
I signed the petition, I think RC just does not dare to be without an ambulance. I think we need to figure out some way. Coming up with some more funding.
And in a way, too, this is insurance for like all our small businesses to have an ambulance here to take care of if someone goes down for cardiac arrest or whatever or whatever the case may be in one of our small businesses. If, if someone goes down like that, you're going to be waiting for rapid to get down here. If this closes down, if it stays running, we're right there. Right, you, ten, fifteen minutes to us, instead of having to wait forty-five minutes to an hour. Is just insurance for all of our small businesses here in our community.
I would like to hear what you guys think.
I'll tell you what I think. I don't think any of us want the ambulance to be gone. That's, I mean, that's kind of the feeling, I guess. That isn't the case whatsoever. Okay, there was a thought, now it's gone, sorry. Yeah. Rewind. If it will, then I'll just have to blurt it out when it comes back.
Are your drivers going to be required to wear the protective groups clothing and stuff for the blood issues and stuff like that, too?
Right now, they do not require any of that stuff, because we can't afford it. So they, I know they buy all this stuff on their own money. We don't provide any, unfortunately, that's something we have to work for better. But yeah, if you listen to them, they, they need all this right, they need right pants if you have a blood peep all over your pants, your shoes, I mean, it doesn't last very long. We, as an ambulance, as far as I'm aware, we're just required to wear the t-shirts, we just provide t-shirts and closed boots, you know, no open toes. But if you do a job like this, they all, they all buy their own equipment themselves. Hands. And you know, it's, it's a little bit, I'm ashamed, because one of our EMTs has to show up in, in somebody's else uniform, because with a hot springs label on it, just because we do not provide any of that.
And we've been told, now, you have to consider that we haven't even had a board meeting, we're not elected yet. But we've been told that the tires on one of the ambulances is in bad need of, that one of the ambulances is in bad need of new tires, that the tires are bad. Can you imagine going on an ambulance, running out of that tire?
I, I don't think that the tires aren't bad, are they, Zach? They, they need.
They need replaced.
Replaced, but they're not. They're studded tires and the studs are getting more out, but we're at the point of the year where we don't need studded tires for, if the roads are that bad, you don't take that ambulance, you take the other one.
But there's like, yeah, there's no wires coming out.
Yeah, they're not, they're not unsafe.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And do you have another set of tires you can put on when you take the studded tires off? Is that a usual procedure?
That's true.
There should be another set of them.
Set of tires already mounted on rims for that ambulance.
Where's those at?
I don't know where they store them, if they store them up there or if D's has them where they're at. And they're, they're just a regular highway tire.
Regular summer tire.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's, that's a good thing.
As you can tell, we don't know all the answers. But we're certainly willing to work at it and get the answers and get it running again.
Now, you, um, if, correct me if I'm wrong, Lily, I, I last time you said that there were sixteen townships, right? Zach was actually.
Nineteen townships around this area.
Okay. And then four of them have paid.
We, from last year, those donations, yeah.
Yeah.
And yeah, we are, I have been in contact with all but three townships and we will be sending out letters to all those townships to like I told them that we'll be sending out letters just to, and give them a little update on it.
Has anybody given you any a, a name?
I've been giving mostly yays. One of the townships, though, they're in a different district that I called scenic or in, they're in Rapid District and they informed me that they donated to their district, so I thank them for their district donation, but so, yeah, I'll be eighteen every cent hour.
And Marty was telling me that there's a state law that says that the townships, if they want to and if they will, can sign a, a contract to pay the ambulance service so much a year for five years. And we're going to try to live on that.
I'm sorry, say that again, Linda, I'm following, but then I.
Did you go over there again? Marty said, Marty told me that there's a state law that says that the townships can sign a contract to pay the ambulances so much a year for five years. That will put us on a much more stable basis financially and we're gonna work on that.
Good. I, I, I think they need to get a little skin in the game, too.
Oh, definitely, we're a whole district here.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I was on the ambulance.
Well, I was on the ambulance for eight years when it was volunteer and absolutely the most critical calls come from the come from the country. There's very seldom when a cow runs over somebody in town or somebody gets their laying spot in a bayler in town. But yes, the most critical calls come from the country. And we have a huge area that you sort of we serve all the way to the Cheyenne River, all the way to the Hocken County line to the edge of the Badlands and about five miles past Los Angeles, our west line. And an awful lot of that is well, as you know, out in the country is throughout the road.
Can anybody give me an idea of how many calls you get from basically from the interstate from non-mobile people compared to
We I'm not.
I I I really like that, but I was just wondering, I had some people tell me today that that probably ninety percent of the of the ambulance calls are on the on the interstate or a highway.
It wasn't that way when I was.
Well, I'm just telling you what somebody's told me, so I'm just wondering about that.
It wasn't that way when I was on. In the summer, what we mostly get is a heart attack or which happened in town and usually at a motel. And usually after somebody had suffered because of the stress of the day and then they come in and they sit down and they have heart attacks. And the other major calls are Yester Highway, but the make the people that use the ambulance the most in wall right now is Prairie Village. They're averaging almost a week. It's our people.
So Lily. And I can give this information to you, but I do have information I can break down by the actual common, how many calls we deal in wall? How many calls we did on Wasta or Queen? And I do have to you you ride here right here on the interstate and we get affected by all this traffic as well. So we have to take calls on the interstate.
I I know we have to do that.
So this is something I can get to you if you want to know. Definitely. I know I have actually information to break down by majority of the world that is more majority of the world. I don't I don't know how we can actually separate the interstate or highway. I have to again
Sure.
find out.
I can. I just thought I'd bring it up.
But a lot of those calls, aren't they maybe either by insurance or something, we can get those other calls?
And we, you know, we talked about it last at the last meeting. We we get especially in the summertime from the tourists. We don't receive correct information from them and they probably do it on purpose. I don't know. So we we get lots of bill back. We have eighty nine thousand dollars in outstanding bills and we most likely not going to get those money. We do have, we still receive some insurance payment, some patient payment if we work with people sometimes. I'm going to tell you in the in the summertime, especially when you have a lot of foreign students working here. This is not playing in our favor because they don't have insurance. And I don't know why I I have insurance on my account. So I have to really explore these areas more. So we end up and they leave. They leave and we don't get paid for that.
And the one thing we're seriously considering doing, and we have to find out if it's if it's legal, I know the hospital does it before they will admit you is you have to get on your driver's license. So if we have their driver's license, we have their correct information and they can't. Well.
That's what
Hopefully.
That's what we do at the fire department. When we go to Iraq, that's one person always goes if their driver's license available. If not, we go into the car and we get their insurance card. That way we have.
The correct.
Driver's registration.
Yeah, registration, license, insurance.
So that that will cut down on that too. There there really are about five major things that we're thinking of doing already without even having a board meeting that we're willing to start doing, but we honest to God need the funding to take us until the ambulance tax district money comes in.
I have one other question too. I was just wondering when you guys is planned, have you planned on contacting other EMTs that have been here, paramedics that have been here and figure out why they left?
I'm I'm working on it.
Okay.
And I just don't want to go into these issues.
Well, yeah, I know. I was just wondering if that was.
Lily, I have a question for you. Okay, so say we came up with the sixty thousand, we advantage thirty six subtract the other fourteen. Then we got to to so what would that be like forty six? We say we got you the sixty, but we call the other fourteen part of our fifty. How long is that going to take you?
And I'm not the one who does books, so I'm you would have.
But didn't you say something about that would run you to May?
Need sixty thousand dollars on top of what we have right now to make it through.
On top of your.
And I don't know what we're going to get and maybe.
Well, I'm talking about I'm talking about sixty thousand. So.
Additional additional to what we have right now, additional sixty thousand to make it through May.
Not not subtract.
Not subtract the thirty six.
No, 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 I'm not subtracting that.
No, he's talking fourteen. He's right.
Yeah.
Still have to figure out the end of the year because when you you remember, we said the hundred twenty seven thousand dollars short.
That's right.
Based on you said projected. So right now, we're just looking forward to our county district money and it's going to buy us a couple few more months before the end of the year and that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to work to find additional revenue right now. But it's very hard to think about how to figure out of other issues when you're thinking about every day, are we going to make it to the next barrel? Are we going to make it to the next barrel? We just running and trying to find this additional funding instead of trying to address some other stuff that needs to be addressed.
But but if we came up with sixty thousand, that'd buy you some time till the tax revenue comes in.
Correct.
And then if you had that money now, how long can you run? Then you're getting pretty close to your big number.
Yeah, yes.
But but no, how does but isn't our fifty already figured in there?
Yeah. Yes, when we projected last time, your fifty already didn't figure in there. So without with that without with your fifty in there, we still need a hundred twenty seven thousand dollars on top of it. So sixty and now we still need hundred twenty seven thousand dollars because we didn't get any additional funding. So we still need hundred twenty seven thousand dollars. So I'm saying it's sixty here and I know there is another fifteen at the end of the year, but it's probably going to be last base. We're very hopeful. We're going to get some other sort of revenue that you know, donations and from townships and we're going to have conversation with data in the county of luck.
And as I understand it, the fifty thousand dollars hasn't been changed for twelve years.
That's very true.
That's true.
Well, I do want to add one thing to that. And I know the city's been very supportive of the ambulance. They bought them an ambulance. I know they're paying on the angles. And I'm very appreciative of that as well. I want to support the ambulance. I I hope the city does something there, but I just wanted to point that out that they're they're doing more than just the fifty thousand.
Yes. Yeah, they buy our ambulance.
And the building.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's not the problem right now. The monetary cash is the problem.
But if but if the city council came up with sixty thousand and we kind of mentally subtract for fourteen to the fifty, so that then we'd be all in a ninety four. But still, it's a ways off, but it would definitely buy us some time.
It would be in at a hundred and ten. Isn't that right?
No.
Well.
Thirty six plus sixty would be ninety six.
Ninety six. And and I'm sorry, I.
But if we came up with sixty, like wrote a check and we kind of mentally, we've given you thirty six of the fifty and we mentally subtract the other fourteen.
You're still at ninety six.
We're ninety six. Okay.
Okay, I think me and you and I, this is way above my head, but we all made the news tonight on the ambulance. But they said there's eleven states that considered them essential service. What does that do to, I mean, I know that they then were forced to have it like a police and fire. But South Dakota, it doesn't consider it. Is that something worth looking into here or does it cause a lot more headaches and government regulations and?
And I'm going to be here this weekend.
This weekend? They don't work on weekends.
They do. They have an EMS conference this weekend.
Take the bulk with.
Like 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 we said, we're already working on it. We just need the time to get it done.
Okay, and we're in the same position. We need some time to get this figured out on budget wise. And so I I'm not hearing a motion at this point to go ahead with that and and we have to be fiscally responsible and make sure that we move ahead resup responsibly. You have heard and these petitions speak loudly of what our community expects and so we're we're not ready right now because we need to look at our budget and and some of us have been doing that and figuring how we can make that work. So we're not ready at this exact point evidently because I haven't heard.
Well, I'm ready. I'm I'm ready. I I I.
I'm ready.
That we come up with sixty thousand for the ambulance. And that'll be a total commitment from the city of wall of ninety six thousand dollars for the ambulance for this year. I think we need to buy the ambulance some time, get that new board in place. They're already making some changes that are going to save us some money and and make the wall ambulance much more viable.
Second. Okay, so there's
Thank you.
There's a motion to the amount was what, Rick?
Well, sixty thousand, maybe sixty thousand. We'll do that, but mentally we'll kind of think fourteen of it is the other part of the the thirty six we've already given.
Okay, is the one that's already budgeted?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that gives us a little time to work through all that too, so we can figure out our budget.
Okay, so it's been moved by Rick, seconded by Jerry, right? Did I get that right? To provide sixty thousand dollars for the ambulance. Is there any other discussion or questions or concerns?
I have a comment.
Okay, Stan?
I just want to make sure I probably have a better chance of needing an ambulance because of my heart condition. And so I do not want to go without an ambulance and I'm one hundred percent behind in favor of this and am ready to move forward.
Thank you, Stan.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments then? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose? Motion carries.
You got it.
Can I add something else?
No more.
No, I I meant to say it earlier, but I forgot because I know people donating money for the ambulance, but we are, we we actually work in this first interstate bank. We're going to just open a bank account that is going to be for donations for the ambulance. We're working on it. We're going to get it done. So if anybody, I know some people hesitant to go through the GoFundMe page because they collect some money, you know, just using this platform. So if anybody would like to donate money to the ambulance, they can go just to the fourth interstate or they can write a check to the ambulance screen. And if they go to the bank, they just can tell them I would like to donate a lot of money to the whole ambulance and they just know how to do it. We open this separate account just for the donations. Just make sure everybody knows.
It's already open.
I I'm glad you addressed that because GoFundMe does have a built in fee.
Yes, true. That's why we will.
And if they, somebody just wrote a check directly, then we get all the money.
Yeah, I I hope it's going to be done tomorrow. We have to just sign it then.
That was in the paper, wasn't it?
No, no, we just I addressed it today. I just went and asked.
Okay, I thought I read it.
I see. It's more on one of the citizens who all donated five hundred on the GoFundMe page. And then there's other people that have donated money on their site, but it does cost, right? So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, with that being said, are we ready to move on then to permits? Thank you for the massive work that you that that Middy did to get those petitions. Thank you very much. I took a lot of extra effort, so thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Please have your board keep us more informed. I mean, we could have been looking at budget over the last five years and we were not really brought up to how the books were doing. I know you don't have to, but it should be nice, but they forewarned earlier than thirty days before you shut down.
Thanks to these guys.
And it is not you guys' fault. Graham, I want to make sure I say that.
Yeah.
What who's the longest one? Eight months?
Yep.
Okay.
Mary, I didn't need to say that I was against the evidence because I think we do need that. I I.
Well, your point is well taken.
I had some comments this afternoon, so I I better bring that up. They wanted to know the amount. I said, I have no idea.
And I know Lily is working on that information.
I'll talk to Lily.
So I had requested it too because I think that's very, very important to know.
Thank you, Mary.
And you know where to find it.
Yeah, I know where to find it. I talk to her quite often.
Okay, so. Just one question on Garrett's comment. Can we tell the ambulance people? You know, it's hard to having a heart attack, giving you the heart is like, is there some way that we can get them to be?
You can get that information from the hospital as well.
Can you do it after the fact?
Well, yeah, because the hospital is going to get that information.
Yeah, so we, okay.
So you can call the hospital and you can pick up the information.
I need a law enforcement reserve today.
Okay, that that would just be I would think that that's not, they're not doing that that. Doing that now.
And they do. They I think they try to take even the picture of the driver license. But they, but they can't like that.
Yes.
Okay, moving right along then, we have a request for a building permit that's been submitted and it's in front of you. It's it's got a drawing attached on the second page there.
Hey, I thought we ended up a while ago saying anything. Was it on Main Street or something? We had to have engineering type plans for it.
In a building?
Well, it wasn't a bill paying, but I mean, the picture we got, I'm sorry, is I'm I'm not against a tent. But I just thought we ought to have better pictures better.
Well, I did include a section of our ordinance that failed might have some bearing on this request. And I just wanted to share that.
It has to be consistent with the rest of the buildings on Main Street.
My comment on that is I just drove down. It's been seven with Jan, about seven months since it happened. And you go back there and it's still, there's junk back there. If this person doesn't take pride in having property on Main Street now, I can't see him keeping them keeping this up. When he has a tent, when there's a tent there, I I just if if there was some some movement of of going forward, but it's not. It yeah, am I making sense there? I I just don't think he's there. They are wanting to approve that. It's just we'll put up a sheet and cover it up and I I don't think that's he's just not showing me that he's. that he's really for this. He just, it's a temporary thing. I'm not making a lot of sense, but I know what I'm wanting to say.
Every taste you want. I know what you're saying.
It just, smart aleck.
Okay, are there any other comments?
Mary, would there have to be porta potties or some kind of restroom with that tent?
Yeah.
And we've already, uh, denied porta potties there.
But you did have restrooms at that point, but again, I'm not arguing for it because if it went through, we'd, I would say one strike and you're done, because I feel that the music would be too loud. We'd have complaints up and down Main Street about that. I would actually worry about the local, the public walking by the front sidewalk, how they would be treated. I mean, and just a lot, a lot of concerns with all that. And if it's gonna be a bar, it's gonna be a open bar.
And Carolyn, I, I forgot to look it up this morning, um, where he, he had, where it's hard, I'm sorry, back in the days, hard liquor and three-two beer, um, where it's alcohol. Don't you have to have a building for that to sell or not?
We don't have anything in the ordinance.
We don't, okay.
Um, I did check with Sturgis, you know, because you're limited on the hard liquor as far as your population, and I did check with the financial officer at Sturgis, and she said when they have all those pop-up vendors that come, they will only issue the malt beverage license. They don't, they will not issue a hard liquor license. If they have one available, they would, she said. I think it's in their ordinance.
But I think when you talk it, that you can't have his liquor license unless he has a yearly.
That's, I didn't check that. That's, I was asking.
But that's what you.
Yeah, yeah.
So he wouldn't have a liquor license then?
That, well, we don't have anything in ordinance stating that, you know, you would have to have a bill.
Carolyn?
I don't think the Department of Revenue, yes.
Uh, uh, so I didn't quite understand that, because I had asked that before. So there we, there is no ordinance that says on Main Street or with a hard liquor license that you, it has to be a structure versus a tent.
No, no connection in our liquor license ordinance has to have it.
And Jimmy is not, is not present at the meeting?
No.
But we do have prohibited structures that, that shall not be allowed in the city. Newer remodeled structures that is not consistent with the general Main Street ambience and atmosphere. I don't think we should have tents on Main Street property. I mean, I, 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 I think it's a really important, uh, part of all, and, uh, you know, that's a valuable property, and if there's gonna be a liquor license and food, there should be bathrooms in a structure.
Question.
Which Linda?
So Linda Eisenbrough, please.
Uh, you have a chance for the celebration?
It's not permanent. I mean, it's not.
Yeah, for three days.
Yeah. How long is this asking for? Also.
Uh, it'd be completed by May first, and it would be,
There was no end date.
Oh, there's no end date on this application.
And actually, the permit just says you want to erect a tent. Then tell us what he's gonna do.
What he's gonna do with it. And I wondered, at what point does that have to be declared?
I would think now, wouldn't it?
Well, you also have a safety issue over there. You have a hole that's not fully empty. So you're going to have to have some kind of structure to keep people from falling in a hole.
Lynn, Lynn Hill, did you have a comment?
I, I thought we, the city council discussed a tent issue last year, and it came up with the state of South Dakota issues the licenses, the liquor licenses. And I'm trying to remember. I thought it said something they had to have a structure there. Or a state license.
I was here for that meeting as well, and that's how I recall it too.
I said there may. I didn't know.
Oh, okay.
You know, I, I don't know what the Department of Revenue, but I checked on that, and they don't, because they issue them all the time, just to, you know, so.
But not for liquor, just beer?
Right. I mean, I guess I didn't ask that question. I just asked Sturgis how they did it, because.
Sturgis will give the liquor license only to.
Well, and they are limited to their populations, well, but she just indicated that she was sure if they had one available, they would not issue it to a tent. It would have to be a structure.
I don't even think we should be discussing liquor licenses, because it doesn't say what he's putting a tent up for. It just says erect a tent. Doesn't tell us what he plans to do with it, or.
So do we want to deny this, or do we want to request more information?
I think he's putting the cart before the horse. The hole needs to be filled first before anything.
I, I agree.
And and that needs to be filled before we even consider it, because we, if we say, okay, you can put up a tent, who's, what's gonna say that he's gonna say, okay, then I'm not gonna fill up the.
So my question is, are we asking for more information on this permit application, or are we going to deny this application? What are the wishes of the council?
I would actually be in favor of asking for more information, uh, the least if he really has some interest, I would think he would show up at the meeting and have some, better plans than what he has drawn up.
Is that a motion, Stan?
Uh, yes, I'll make that motion.
Okay, so Stan has moved.
I guess I don't wanna say the motion that I'm approving any building permit, but I would
No, but you are moving.
Be willing to listen further.
Okay, so you are moving to, uh, request more information regarding this particular application, and Kelly has seconded?
Yes.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Okay, so, uh, Carolyn, can you, uh, reach out with Kelly and request more information on this stuff? Okay, so then, moving to the next application, which is a, um, a sign permit. And they, and there's a picture attached of what that sign is. Quite a lot more information here available. Will be completed by June. Okay, so everyone got it in front of them, in front of them?
The little black spot is the new sign, right? Seventy thousand dollars.
So it's gonna be digital, we do realize that.
Yes. I'm sorry, I don't like digital signs. If I can't read my text while I can drive, how the heck am I supposed to read them signs as I'm driving?
I just wanted to say that's why nothing's there, because it's gonna run different things across, I'm sure.
Okay, so uh, what are your wishes regarding this permit?
I'd make a motion to approve.
Okay, it's been moved to approve and seconded to approve the sign permit for BJ's Food and Fuel. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. All right. That brings us to public comments. Uh, at this time, it's, uh, to discuss or express concerns with any issue on or not on the agenda. No action, action will not be taken. There's a three-minute limit. Do we have any public comments at this time for this evening? Larry?
I wasn't aware that I could talk while, while the sheriff was here. I don't think he, I appreciate you guys bringing up the fact that my house is broken, do not mine, but my rental house and where I've got people staying, and I don't think he treated you guys fair either. He didn't give you a real good answer, so I thought he was gonna be here, and I, I thought, well, I gotta wait till this time to, to bring it up, and I'll, I'll come back. I've got ideas that I think you need to have a, a person here on call twenty-four seven. Not when, when my people that was in that house called the, called the Rapid City Office, says, well, there's nobody on, on call. From, from there, we'll have to send somebody down. Well, to my, to my knowledge, there, there should be something like that going on, and I know you guys can't make any decisions right now, and I don't expect it, but, but I thought I'd just bring that up, and I'll come back and and tell him what I think should be done, if, if that's all right with you. So that's, that's all I, that's really what I come for. I didn't come to stop by the evidence at all, but, so.
Larry, Kelly whispered to me when he got done.
What?
Kelly whispered to me when he got done. Was that really an answer?
Well, that's.
And it wasn't.
I didn't think so. I, I talked to both of you today. I talked to Mike one, one time about it, and and that wasn't an answer, as far as I'm concerned. I, I thought I'd just mentioned that, so.
Well, I, this is the first time that I've ever heard that we had somebody that was on call. I've never, have you guys ever heard? I, and so it's a little disappointing that that was never information that was shared with us.
Well, and I thought, I thought there probably was, but I think you've got four cops that.
We've asked before, and the answer was no, that they couldn't.
They, they, yeah, that, that's what I thought they would go to. They said, and, and recently, the, the city council in the last year or so did go to four full-time police officers, which, you know, should be a twenty-five percent increase in coverage, but we don't have twenty-four hour, seven day a week coverage. We just don't have it.
And I heard, but I just heard, it wasn't official, that one of the police officers said, had they been told, they would have been here within ten minutes and probably would have caught them still in the house.
I, I know one of them told me that, told me personally that, so. And, and I don't know whether they all live within, do they have to live in the wall?
Pennington County.
I told them.
Pennington County's a lot ways, could be, could be Hill City or so.
Because, uh, Danny lived in Jackson County. Yeah, but she had special approval from us, so I think it's, uh, certain within city limits or unless approved.
And, and, and I, I'd never remember hearing that we could get anybody on call.
No.
So I never. Think that's what he intended? I thought his intentions were that if the dispatch would have let one of the locals know, they would have went to the call, but, because we do have people in town, but I guess I didn't think he meant we have twenty-four seven on call, because we are not paying for that.
Well, it was asked on call. He said we have that. Dispatch just didn't contact or didn't activate it.
Good, good. We get, get, the committee getting in touch with the, the, the police and clarify that, I, I. I think you gotta have some clarification there, the way it sounds to me, any, anyway, if nothing else.
Yeah, we'd have another emergency. Come on, you know, hopefully one of them, and granted, they have a life too. They might sit home having beer or something, and then you wouldn't want them to get into a situation like you have, but.
Yeah, and I, I don't mean that they have to be down at the police station here twenty-four seven. They can be home and, and have their phone numbers available or something.
There's only one deputy that lives in.
That lives in town.
Right.
Okay.
And Portero lives in Quinn.
Yeah.
And the other ones are Rapid.
So anyway, I'd take more, more than my three minutes, probably.
But, but, good question, and we're gonna pursue it.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll get a meeting set back up with our things and and invite you guys in. The central services, and we, because we do need to get on that. Yeah, okay, any other comments? All right, that brings us to Dr. Pittman.
Good evening, Council.
I've got three minutes now.
Okay.
No, they're not in shape.
Yeah.
Better on.
And that's not just for, no, no, I mean, not just.
The higher states.
All, that's what I was trying, yeah.
Yeah. So, congratulations. Um, we, we got a busy week going. Uh, tomorrow we'll be interviewing for, uh, the construction manager at risk. We have three very good candidates to uh, interview, and hopefully on Wednesday night or our, our regular school board meeting, we're selecting one to build the CT complex, so. This is a new learning curve for all of us. Never worked with a construction manager, but, um, uh, I both gave me the set and I got thumbs ups from our constituents to that this is the way to go, so. Something new, and, uh, hopefully we have great results tomorrow. Uh, a reminder, uh, parent teachers conference is the fifteenth and the sixteenth. Uh, it'll start at three forty-five and run to six thirty. Uh, when we have gymnastics, they qualified five young ladies to go to uh, state in Aberdeen this weekend, and two of more students made it on the expedition ticket, so we'll have seven total rest, or gymnast, gymnast, gymnast going. Wrestling will be headed to their regional, and then finally their state, and then our girls and our boys basketball will be very busy, and then we'll be wrapping that up later in this, this month. Um, we do now have two positions open right now. We have a kitchen assistant position and a six-twelve principal position that we're advertising right now, so, uh, we're taking applications for that. And, um, today I, I turned in a Homeland Security grant to hopefully, uh, put in new, uh, remote access doors. Um, the magnets and the, the security system on the current doors that we have, so I can sit here on my phone and see what's going on, but not that I'm not desperate for entertainment, but anyway, it would be a nice tool to have to, uh, so we'll see how that grant application goes, so. So it's been, we got some exciting stuff going. Carolyn and I went to the, uh, Felissa meeting. Felissa is the Federal Lands Impacted Schools Association. The, um, wall is heavily impacted by federal lands in the school district. Well, we had a great trip, and, you know, we suffered through the eighty-degree temperatures and. So any questions for me? All right, well, thank you. You all have great evenings.
Good luck with your meeting tomorrow night.
Yeah.
That is awesome. Okay, chamber report.
Mary, we just have something for, uh, uh, executive section.
Okay, all right, sounds great. All right, economic development.
Good evening. I apologize for my voice. I had a bit of a cold. I'm not contagious, so. Economic Development is hosting a roundtable discussion at Prairie Village on Tuesday, February twenty-first at two thirty. The topic of discussion is going to be senior care, mostly focusing on at-home care as well as insurance options for seniors. We are also gonna talk about, um, what's helping them already in our community, up for resources for them to access. Our goal of this is to keep seniors living in wall and in their homes where they're happiest and keeping them healthy as well. Uh, my next item I'd like to discuss is the South Dakota Municipal League article. Uh, wall was featured as the community of month um, in the South Dakota Municipal League this month. We drafted that. You can find the entire article on the Municipal League website. Um, Lily kinda touched on the ambulance fundraiser. A lot of what Economic Development wanted to do is spread awareness of it as well as make donations. Uh, we also, um, we did like to drop off a check as well. We can do that. Economic Development donated three thousand, and we are. Economic Dev- Development donated three thousand and we are challenging businesses and community members to donate as well, so. Please help out our. Community members. Thank you for your guys' donation, but you know, that only goes till May and. They can keep taking donations, you know, I'm sure they'll take anything you got, so. Please do. Um, I'd also like to touch on industrial park spending. There's been a lot of discussion and questions on. How much this city has spent on the industrial parks, so I thought I'd provide that information to the public. Um, I know there's been false rumors going around, so I just wanna make it all clear. Uh, the total includes infrastructure, surveying and engineering costs. So the city has paid a total of six hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety-six dollars and eighty-eight cents towards the industrial park. However, underground construction lumped in industrial park costs with fourth avenue construction costs on invoices. So I just wanna add that that number would be slightly lower, but that's where we're at with that. Um, somebody also asked about buyer interest. Um, we've had a lot of buyer interests. Obviously, that's confidential information. I can't share who, what, or when. Um, but we do have buyer applications out there that we are waiting to receive back. Um, that's all my information I have for tonight. Is there any questions? Alright, thank you.
Okay. Well, then that brings us to the uh ordinance twenty-three oh one. Uh, this is the second reading for this tonight.
So I did make two slight changes in it from the last meeting after reviewing it and striking out the section that. You guys didn't wanna change on um. Not having to serve food, um exempting a video lottery establishment from having to serve food. And I missed one of the codes for an on-sale liquor license and it's the wine and cider license that you can have. And it's on sale, so those three licenses you would have to have in order to um have a video lottery license. And then also at one time, they're always changing the application and at one time there was a box that you checked. That they were eligible for a video lottery and. When I went back and go check that, that box is not on the application anymore, so I just. Changed it that approval of the city count, upon approval of the city council rather than checking the box, so. I just, that was only two slight changes.
Okay, and you said that the establishment would have to have one of those three.
Those three.
Either an RL, an RB, or RW.
Right.
One of three. Okay. So this is uh the second reading with corrections and edits now. Any further questions, comments?
I'll move to approve. Second reading of ordinance twenty-three dash zero one with changes.
Dan is moved. And Jerry has seconded. Any further questions or comments? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, opposed? Okay, motion carries and so now that will be published uh February, February fifteenth, correct, Carolyn? Yes, okay, that's what it says on the bottom end. Okay, and it would be effective March seventh. Okay. So that brings us to. Uh. The conditional uh loan commitment. Uh, this is the closest thing we've gotten to. Uh, something actually in writing from South Dakota Housing. Um, I forwarded this out for everybody's review. Uh, we met with uh Echo Valley. And Beverly Cots this morning, Carolyn and I did, to clarify a couple of questions. One on the twenty-four lots plat with Echo Valley will be uh getting that accomplished. And also to get a better understanding on how they work the process. The company, the construction company would submit a bill. To Carolyn, Carolyn would forward that to them for payment. The payment would come back and we would make that payment. We just have not worked with this particular agency before and we want to make sure we understood what that process was. So we're not ready for approval of this document at this time. We are just simply, we've got to get the rest of it completed. The Echo Valley part as well as uh the correct. Um. Uh, plat updated, legal description is what I'm trying to say. And the completion, we need this done April first. Uh, back to them by April first, so we will bring this back to you perhaps. The first uh meeting in March, final approval. So this was informational only at this point. And so then that brings us to the mayor's report and I just wanna report that we did um. Uh, you complete the retainer agreement with the uh attorney. He's indicated that. He, his completion date would be February fourteen. And Mr. Trask is uh compiling the additional documents that he has requested. And he is doing it for the capped amount that we made the motion for at the last meeting. So that completes my uh report for tonight. And that moves us to Carolyn, your finance officer report.
So the only thing I wanted to share is that I will be out of the office. Tomorrow mid-morning, uh going to appear to attend my Municipal Board Meeting. And then attending the legislative supper that they have with the legislation. And staying over and um Mary will be attending with me. And then we will be able to sit on, in on some of the legislation for part of the morning on Wednesday. Be back in the office Wednesday afternoon.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, but Kelly will be in the office uh to answer any questions or um answer phone calls. Alright, Public Works and Garrett.
Well, we got the ceiling tiles done in the kitchen. In the center, it's nice. Still waiting for the one to the bathroom. And moving spell. That's about it. And all the ice trying to get the gutters cleaned out, so the water isn't good.
Okay, yes. One day we're gonna really get warm and we're gonna have lots of water everywhere. Linda?
I have a question on your report, Mary. What was the amount that you guys approved for this next lawyer?
Uh, it was capped at five thousand.
Thank you.
So he can go up to that amount, but not over. And he did give us an hourly rate, so I assume he'll, he'll work up that number. Okay. Anything else in here? Okay, good to go. Alright, are there any items for discussion? No action will be taken, but did anyone wanna bring anything? To the council? And with that being said, next city council meeting will be February sixteenth. At six thirty. Uh, PM. And so that brings us then to item number twenty-six.
I make a motion, we go into executive session for the purpose of discussing legal personnel issues according to SDCL one dash twenty-five dash two.
Okay, okay, it's been moved and seconded that we'll go into executive session. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose? Okay, I heard you stand. Thank you. Okay, we do have uh three items tonight and so first. Okay, I will call us out of exec- executive session. Is there any other business that needs to come before the council tonight? Hearing none? Meeting is adjourned.
We're already on that, Jerry. Yeah, well, I even signaled you. Speaking of which, you know what my father used to make me do?